Are they gonna be docked?
Yeah. They'll be reducing salary by a hundred dollars.
Is that a folder labeled today's date town meeting?
I need a little tip for that. What are you getting?
Looking for the folder.
I think it's in the wall, Dan. There was one thing in the wall when I came in.
I'm gonna have to get my Saluki's tee.
No, I'm gonna have to do it later.
Hey, Dan. Dan, I got your favorite sweatshirt on. Yeah? I told Ken he and I will have to get it on. I'm gonna have to get my Saluki shirt out, so. They make such a thing? Yeah, really.
Are the two of you sharing the microphone over there?
Yeah, we don't have.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because we've got seven people and we have six mics, I guess.
Yeah. Your mask skills are astounding.
Yeah. Okay. Well, just remember to lean toward the mic when you want to call.
No, I mean, I've heard of it, I don't know what.
In order for me to share this, I'm gonna have to get on the Internet, so I need to know.
The password is island access lower.
Are there any outside participants on the?
There are eleven participants, including our devices here.
And are we live?
Yes, it's being recorded.
Okay. Well, then, let me call the workshop to order. It's ten o'clock on January thirteenth. This is a workshop to discuss the needs for our Internet, telephone, computer hardware, and software needs for the city. No decisions will be made in this workshop. Any proposals or action to be taken as a result of the workshop will be addressed by resolution at a meeting of the town council. So with that, I'm gonna ask people's patience while I get my PC up to speed here so that I can display the documents. But in the meantime, I'm gonna turn it over to Linda.
Okay. I'm gonna give you this information. Okay. Dan already went through the purpose of the workshop, and so we are going to be looking at a document that Dan is gonna try to display on his screen if we. So it'll be up on the shared screen hopefully shortly for the Zoom audience. And we're gonna look at all the IT requirements today that the new town will have here in our town hall office. And so we're gonna go through the items one at a time that I have in the sheet, and we can cover some of this stuff while Dan's setting up, and it won't matter. The first item is the Internet. We have to have Internet connection. And we, I think we've decided early on that we wanted all of our equipment and resources to be separate from Hi-Sid's, so there's no confusion, and we get separate bills and what have you. I personally think that Cox is the most reliable Internet provider we have in this area, and so my recommendation is to go with Cox.
I use Cox. It's, I don't know, I can't remember a failure. But of course, other than only lights are off.
Yeah. It does, I mean, occasionally there's an outage, but you have that with any service.
It's been there ninety-nine percent of the time, and it's fast. Of course, I think I have a higher speed than you're talking about.
Actually, I do too, and I'm a little worried about the speed that we got quoted. And Ash.
I think I would look at.
Actually, fifty is what I'm thinking we need.
What's the password?
Island access, two words, lower. In a blank in between.
Initially, we probably could get by with one five.
We might, but when we're doing Zoom meetings.
Well, also, if we get an email server at, et cetera, you know, we may, we start using. We get our, all of us using the same. At some point in time, it's not gonna be adequate.
Yeah. And the thing that bothers me about this estimate that we have from Cox, he quoted a twenty-five megabyte gateway for dang near a hundred bucks a month, ninety-three ninety-nine bucks a month. And then I go online, and I see they're offering fifty megabit bit Internet for fifty-five a month for businesses.
You're probably getting commercial as opposed to residential.
No, this is fifty-five for business Internet.
I'm certain that's a promotional price.
It might be.
Yeah.
But it's available now.
Right, right.
But I think we need to check into it at least.
Yeah.
What's going on. I can't get them to call me back, though, so.
Was that, was that price, was that price with bundling any phones or any other?
Actually, it was. It was ninety-three ninety-nine with two phones on the same bid.
Yeah, and some kind of, some kind of other piece of hardware, which I don't know what it is.
Well, it's the phone lines and the phones, basically.
Well, there's some kind of controller there, too.
Well, it says Centrex seat, but that's the VoIP line.
That's a card that they put into the gateway. I have Cox phone on my, at home.
Okay.
So it's just an attachment they put inside the box.
Okay.
So we handle phones.
The only thing I've heard about Cox phone, and I don't know, I know our church uses it, and I know the pharmacy uses it, because I tried to call the pharmacy all last week on, all day, and it wouldn't work.
Oh, mine.
And I talked to the kid up there, and he said, they have, they have that problem when it's raining or something. I said, but have you experienced any, you're using Cox for your phone? No, no problems?
With the voiceover IP? No, I can't go into a lot of detail, but the implementation of the voiceover IP was problematic.
Yeah, I understand from Bill Noonan that it was, and Kerry, that it was because you tried to get AT&amp;T to do the initial install, and they totally fouled it up, so.
I don't know the details of it, except that it was problematic.
Yeah. Anyway.
On my device at home, you just turn on the router, and within three minutes, it's all live. But as long as the router's offline or your Internet's down, the phone does not work.
And electricity.
Well, I think, yeah, there are two other solutions here, but some of them depend on the Internet connection in your office, so we could, if everyone's, you know, doesn't have any further comments, I think we'll just see if we can bump that up to fifty meg, at least, get a price for the fifty meg, and be done with the Internet discussion.
I mean, I, we would, I think we would be fine for six months or possibly for a year. We'd get speed that, you know, eventually, when we get.
And that's another option, too, yeah. If it's expensive to go up, we could go with this and live with it.
Yeah.
See how it works.
If there's another installation cost, et cetera. Otherwise, I would say, yes, go for fifty.
I'll comment at the Presbyterian Church. We have been live streaming church service, and we were only on a ten-two service, and then about halfway through the service, it was getting cut out. So we upgraded to twenty-five, and last week, it was fine.
Okay, that's a good point.
And upgraded to twenty-five, I think we just had to call them, and they switched it from ten to twenty-five.
Yeah, okay.
If, you know, if that's the thing, then I would, you know, say, start off, you know, if that's what you find out, twenty-five would be adequate to ten, because we're gonna be minimal for a while, at least a year.
Yeah, I agree with you. So we might save a few bucks if we started low. Okay. Next subject is phones, and this estimate, like I said, from Cox included phones. And they're, they're charging quite a bit for the phone device itself. But let me just say, it's a VoIP. All these, all these phone solutions are VoIP.
Right.
And we've got an estimate from Cox that will run us, and this is just the phone part, would run us nine-hundred-and-fifty for the first year. It doesn't include the Internet. The Internet, I separated out up at the top. So.
No, it just says host disabled, participants.
You might, you might be able to just allow him to share screen with the.
Allow to record.
Anyway, if they, if we can't share the screen, it's okay, we could.
I don't see it on here for allowing to share the screen. Now, we could make him the host. Whoops.
Well, you could. You'll have to watch, or you could watch chat on this anyway. You could make him the host, but he'd have to admit anybody knew, and that's all he'd have to do. You wanna do that, Danny?
I don't know if I can handle the responsibility.
Do you want it? For him to share it, we're gonna have to make him the host, I guess.
I think so.
All right.
Try that, we'll try it and see how it works.
Okay.
Okay.
So we should be able to.
We'll carry on, and hopefully, we can share this on the Zoom screen.
It started sharing, Dan.
Can everybody see it?
Yes, it just popped up here.
See what?
On the Zoom screen, the present, this, this document we're reviewing.
For the people at home to see it.
Yeah. Okay. So.
Yeah, I thought I supposed to.
No, it's gonna be just, they have computers.
So the first option is to go with the Cox estimate of nine-fifty a year, which I think is too high. Another option is, I talked to a fellow from Verizon. He provides some Verizon VoIP phone services to Hi-Sid, not their office, I don't think, but he does, and I could be wrong on that, but I know he does provide the water department with their devices. And anyway, he said that Verizon has, can offer us a government plan that has a significant, well, not a significant, but a twenty percent, I think he said, discount for their services. And he quoted me two VoIP phone lines and an app that you can, called OneTalk, that you put on your, any device. You can put it on your PC, you put it on your personal cellphone, your personal iPad or tablet, Android, iOS, either way. And you can then receive calls on those devices. So you can receive calls on your desktop PC, you could receive calls on your, and you'd use a headset with the desktop PC. So that would be your phone. And you would, you'd use the app to do call forwarding, voicemail, anything you would do with your normal device, you would have an app on your PC or cellphone or whatever to do those functions that you would normally use the hard device for. And I did a lot of research on this, and it, a lot of businesses are now using these VoIP apps as their phones, because it's so simple. It eliminates you having to carry two phones with you. So you have sort of a virtual cellphone that operates like a cellphone, but it's an app that goes on your phone. And so when you want to make a call using your business number, you open the app, and it has buttons to punch and stuff to do the calling. It, it will notify you when a call comes in, and you'll open the app and punch buttons to answer the call, or call forward, or do a number of things. You can also text through it using a business phone number. So SMS and MMF, I believe. So I might be wrong on the MMS, but I know it does SMS.
On your conversations, if nobody answers the phone, and it goes to voicemail, does it create an email?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think most all these services that had the apps sent, did, would send an email to you with your voicemail, either as a recording, and some of them transcribed it even.
Oh.
Or you can access on the app itself, just your voicemails like you would on your iPhone.
Very interesting.
Very interesting. I mean, it's remarkable. It's just absolutely remarkable technology. And it does eliminate needing to carry two cellphones, so I think that's why it's becoming so popular. And it's cheaper, too. It's much cheaper than having, paying a hundred and fifty dollars either over time or one time for a desk phone, which is about what they cost, let me just say. The Cox phones that they quoted on their schedule here, this phone runs one forty-nine on Amazon. The next quote where, oh, there was a Nextiva, you see, I penciled it in on your paper documents in front of you. Nextiva is a VoIP provider to numerous corporations and businesses all over the US. And they quoted me two desk phones plus two lines plus an app, does the same thing virtually that OneTalk does, maybe even better. And it was a little more expensive, and their phone was about a hundred and forty-five or a hundred and forty-nine if you purchased it outright. So that's what a desk phone costs. And I'm just thinking, how many, how much would you be really using your desk phone versus your cellphone to take calls? I don't know, it's up to you guys to decide, though. We can go either way.
The, one question, it says one phone line.
Oh, with, on the Nextiva, are you talking?
On option three, yeah.
Option three. Oh, that's Ring Central. Yeah, that works a little bit differently. Ring Central.
You were talking about option two, yeah?
I was talking, Verizon is option two.
Right.
It includes an app, and they quoted me two different estimates, one with smartphones and one with desk phones. And I still need to clarify with him whether you can just get the OneTalk app or not, but the quotes I have are with phones.
Okay, but you were talking with the apps and everything, you were talking about option three.
Verizon, Ring Central, and Nextiva all have robust apps that do the same sort of stuff, where you can take calls on any device you own, and you can, you can, basically, if you're on your desk phone, you can switch the call over as it's in progress to your cellphone and walk out the door. So that's another kind of feature. It is, I'm blown away by this technology, I've gotta say, because I haven't really encountered it before.
So the City Hall will not be manned full-time, so if I'm a citizen and want to call, I call City Hall, and it rings to someone's cellphone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It'll ring to mine, basically.
Okay.
Because I'd be the.
The way we were thinking, it would be, you would call the mayor or call the reporter treasurer.
Okay, well, I guess my confusion is, is because we talked before, you know, during the planning and about Hi-Sid phones rolling over to them to answer, is that not on the table anymore?
No.
Okay.
They could take a message and let us know.
Well, that's kind of why Lawrence is here, he wanted to.
Oh, you have a solution for that?
Well, he wanted to know why we wouldn't be, why we wouldn't consider.
Two different systems not connected is probably the reason.
I think he, my, my thoughts on this, you know, when we started the planning and everything, was that, that somebody would dial into ninety-seven-hundred, and the person there manning the desk would determine whether it should go to Lawrence or one of the department heads or whatever.
Or should go to the city.
Well, you know, if they have the ability to call forward, they could call forward to one of our numbers easily.
Right.
And then it would, you know, it would ring us, and they could get into our system, leave a message.
That way, you know, whoever calls is talking to a person.
But even if we weren't here, it would go to a voicemail or, at the worst, worst case.
And I, you know, I, you're gonna have, you know, my vision of this thing, you know, is that people are going to come here with their problem, and they don't know who they, may not know who they want to talk to or who they need to talk to. And they could come in person, or they could call. And that person at the front desk, and that's was part of my vision for services provided, that they would determine and route them to who everything needs to talk to.
Can I ask that you talk into the mic when you talk, because?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It just doesn't pick up well on the Zoom.
Well, I can't tell what it's doing.
Okay. But everyone kind of needs to talk into the mic.
But, you know, that, you know, I, I just think it would be easier for the residents to have one number and let them get directed, especially since we're not going, I don't know, one time we talked about having set hours that, you know, Dan would be there to talk to people.
Well, we could investigate their system, I mean, potentially, they might have the ability to route directly via their telephone desk set to a number that's been, to a key that's been programmed with our call forwarding number, and I think that would be worth checking out.
You know, I, you know, we could, we could have a device right there available to them, or go off of their ninety-seven-hundred number, I don't know.
Yeah, there, I see, there's one, one issue I, that I think we need to be, be thinking about. The, the Hi-Sid system is basically desktop phones. So it's possible that the, this person by the front desk could take a call from the city, forward it to a, the mayor's desktop phone, or to the recorder's desktop phone, but where does it go from there? Does it just ring and go to an answering machine on that phone until I come in and check my voice messages? And which, you know, could be hours after the call was actually made.
Well, we could use a desktop phone or use this other application where it would use your cellphone.
What, the Ring Central, I know, has, it sounded to me like they have, you can set up twelve numbers to call forward to, but it cycles through.
All we'd have to do is.
Find out how that works, but.
You know, give the person at the front desk access to that.
The call central would be, would be on the mayor's desktop phone, or that would be on the Hi-Sid switchboard.
Well, let me, let me explain the Ring Central option, because it's a little bit different, okay? Ring Central provides a central number, and then we would get two actual numbers off of it, that would be you and Wes's number. But you, the, the main number could be town hall in general. And so they would call the town hall number for anything, and they would be welcomed by a auto attendant that is programmable by us and say, you know, for this, option one to do this, option two to do that, kind of so to speak, you know? And then if those numbers don't answer, I think you can roll them forward to other numbers, or you, you have options at least, whether you want to roll it forward, or you want to stop it at there and take a message, or what. I think there is, there are lots of options with this one, and you get a central town hall number with it, with Ring Central.
I, I think we need to have Linda investigate this option further and see if, but we have to decide on the concept that we want to try and implement.
Yeah, Ring Central involves no, buying no physical devices, though. It's strictly cloud.
I think for establishing ourselves as a town hall, as, and as an entity apart from Hi-Sid, it's important to have a town hall number.
Yeah, under all these other circumstances, I think we just have to pay for a separate line.
Yeah. But this, I can't remember if it was Ring Central, but it was a service very simple, similar that, at one of my newspapers, and it worked pretty well, because you call the main number, and the automatic attendant or a real person answers, but then it'll give you options. And, you know, in our case, it was like, if you want a particular salesman, you hit one, and the, you know, the adder to two or whatever, and that worked pretty well.
Yeah, and there are several vendors that sell this type of software. Ring Central's one of the top ones, so.
Personally, I don't, having a desktop phone, now, the next mayor may have a totally different opinion, but for me, having a desktop phone is totally unnecessary, in, you know, especially if it's only there as a call forwarding device. If, you know, I do plan on having, you know, regular hours down here once, once we get the office set up. But even after that, you know, the mayor's office has got to be a virtual office, where people can get ahold of me anytime, wherever I'm at, and that's my cellphone. So the quickest way to get the person making the call to my cellphone, the quickest and cheapest way to do that is the way that I think we need to go. I don't really see the advantage of having a live person sitting in the office down here answering a phone number only to do a function that could easily be done, done automatic, you know, where they just, it just directly goes to my, to my phone.
Where do we stand on, I know you mentioned about you and Lawrence were getting together on a contract, so when will we know just exactly what Hi-Sid, other than housing the space, what services are they gonna provide?
The, well, we, we can, we can have that agreement in place kind of the day after the next town council meeting and the next board of commissioners meeting, because they'll have to approve the agreement. But we talked about it for about an hour this morning, and kind of the only thing that's left to fill in the blanks on is this. So we can't write an agreement until we know how the system is gonna work and how everybody fits into it. And, you know, there's no need to pad the agreement with tasks for Hi-Sid to do that are totally unnecessary, you know?
Well, I.
We're committed to doing, you know, things for the least amount of money, so that, that any money we do have can go towards resurfacing roads and buying fire trucks and not, not paying people to sit there and answer telephones. paying people to sit there and answer telephones.
I, I agree with that, but I, I think the district's going to get a lot of calls, they, they do now, that they can't do anything with, so they, they.
I would be willing to bet that they do have a way to call forwards by pressing a particular key to call forward, a call through, and that key could be tuned to one of our numbers.
And I, I am comfortable with whatever Lawrence is comfortable and also being responsive to the people because I, I guarantee you, a lot of people are going to call that number when they really need to be talking to you or.
Well, yeah. And, yeah.
So.
But that would be, that would be call forwarding to, to the city number.
Right.
Almost independent of what kind of system the city has.
Yeah, so, I mean, whatever.
If it's, if the simplest way to do it is for the, the city to have a phone that acts as a, as a link, uh, so that the switchboard person out here can just forward that call that comes in about wild dogs, uh, to the city number, and then that automatically dials my cellphone number, that, that, that would be fine.
Well, you're, you're gonna have.
You know, he's gonna get calls, they're gonna direct them to Lawrence, and there are gonna be some things that he can't have, but, you know, I hope our working agreement is going to be such that he could, you know, go ahead and do.
I just don't want to, you know, I don't want to overcomplicate it because, um, the phone isn't going to ring that often.
No.
It really is not going to ring that often. And, uh, having a, a really fancy schfancy system that doesn't even ring once every day is, uh, seems unnecessary.
Oh, you may be surprised. Oh, God.
Because even if I'm sitting at a desk down there, you know, I would just assume it comes to my cellphone as to a desktop phone.
But, but the, the beauty of like a, a system like this Ring Central is that you can call one number and then click a, just one key and get anybody. I mean, if we get, can do to twelve users, we can do one for every councilman, for you, for, uh, everybody and.
You could.
And, I mean, and the, the cost.
I, I, I totally agree with you, Jared. We need to totally investigate that application, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, yeah, most of the calls are going to be for the mayor, but, you know, uh, when I was on the council in Oklahoma, I got a lot of calls, uh, and, you know, we were in wards and, and that, as we look ahead, that might be the best system when we go to wards in, in two years.
And, and that would be option number three?
Yeah.
Number three.
Now, I have a question. I want to throw out some ideas.
Yeah.
Um, one thing, now, the Cox proposal, Cox is the only one of these that I, that I talked to.
Right.
And the Cox phone system would have call forward, so it could forward phones like to your cellphone, which we do now. We just started at home. I found out you go to Cox and you go to this no more robo on Cox, and you can block computer-generated calls. Plus, there's a simultaneous ring feature which I have set up for my cellphone, so now when a call comes to my cell, our house phone, my cellphone rings at the same time, which, you know, I don't know, I assume we would have that option with the Cox phones.
Well, it wouldn't know when your home phone rang or, I mean, but if, if you're talking about, if you're asking about Ring Central.
Well, what I'm talking about, if a call would, if that would be set up, say, to my desk phone here, and that would ring, I'm thinking it would probably go right to my cellphone right away.
I would have to check which solution we chose.
Right.
To know whether, did you ask Cox that question?
Cox, yeah.
About the simultaneous ring?
Pardon?
The simultaneous ring, did you ask Cox that?
That's Cox. That was all done through Cox.
What was their answer?
No charge. I just programmed it through, to do the no more robo, and then you had all this, these options on no more robo, but you had to go to Cox originally to, to get the no more robo.
I know there's no more, uh, the, the robo calls that you, you can, you have the ability, I'm, I'm still sure on Ring Central to block robo calls, and some of these others mentioned it.
Another question is, would, okay, we're talking about when we get down to printers and so on, multi-function printers which would have fax capabilities.
Yeah, a lot of these have fax.
Wouldn't we have, wouldn't we have to have landline to do fax?
No.
No. You don't have a landline anywhere.
These will do faxes, these, uh, virtual ones will all do faxes.
But with Cox, isn't that a landline?
It's not a landline, it's a VoIP, it's internet line.
Okay.
Only, only way you get a landline is AT&amp;T.
We've got a landline with Cox.
No, you don't.
Yes, we do.
No, you don't.
No, there's not one here.
Okay, but at home we do.
Oh, okay, you have one at home, sure. I don't think you need one though to do faxes.
It's voice, it's over your internet if it's Cox. Cox does not have landlines.
Okay, but at least it comes to our fax machine and the people now that don't have landlines, if they want to fax, get a document to me or something, they've got to take a picture of it and email it to me, and then I've got to open it up and do a snippet.
I don't think anybody uses fax or anything.
Take a picture and then print it out.
Yeah. Why don't they, if they're scanning it in anyway, if they're in, why don't they just email you the scanned document?
Pardon?
If they're scanning it to you, to get it into a fax, why don't they scan it in and just email it to you?
Well, they're taking a picture and sending me the picture.
Well, same thing. You're scanning it on your, your computer, your, your printer either way when you do a fax. So, I mean, taking a picture with your cellphone is a little different, but if you want to scan it into your computer and then fax it from your computer, you may as well just scan it in as a document and email it.
But I can, I can just go to my printer and send a fax, period.
Yeah, you can, you don't have to go through your computer, you're right.
Doesn't go to the computer or anything, I'm just sending a fax.
Yeah.
And I can also receive them the same way.
It is kind of outdated technology, however.
I don't think anybody, I don't think very many people use faxes anymore.
No, they don't.
Ever since it comes email.
However, I think all of these solutions include faxing.
I do frequently when I, you know, I have a lot of pages or something.
I know with the Ring Central, you can receive a fax.
Okay.
But it comes to your app and it, so you would manipulate it like a document coming in and saving it to some source on your PC or on your iPhone or whatever.
Wes, on the, the Cox, uh, information you provided us a month or so ago, uh, that was for a Town Hall number?
Two Town, two numbers.
Two numbers.
Two phone lines.
But one number, two lines.
Would have a separate number for the mayor and one for the recorder.
Two separate numbers.
But I think, I, I, I'm thinking your question might be, can you send a fax from one of the printers we installed for the Town Hall? Is that the question?
And can we also receive a fax?
Yeah, uh, I'll have to check it.
Well, that, he, he could do that with this app, with the Ring Central app, right?
Well, he's talking about receiving it on the printer, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I'm, to me, that's not necessary. I don't think you have to receive it on the printer to be able to use it.
Well, you receive it on your computer and that's printed.
Now, whether he wants to send it via scanning it into a printer and send it that way, that's a different story.
A whole lot easier just to send it.
I was gonna say, I, I, why would you want to do that? If you've got it in your computer and can fax by computer, why would you want to print it out?
I know, that, if, that's exactly it. I, I don't think that's a very efficient way of doing it, actually.
I haven't used it. I used, I did a lot of work back and forth remotely and I haven't had a fax machine in ten years, probably.
Give me a circumstance that you would want to fax something to someone.
Anyway, um.
Well, if I'm faxing applications or something, um.
That you filled out my pen?
I've had some, well, I would have the documents, and then, yeah, you, I just load them into the printer and tell it to fax, and then it just feeds them through and faxes it.
Well, you can do the same thing from your computer. You're creating a separate step.
But if it's not in the computer, if it's not in the computer.
The only reason it would not be in the computer is if you were adding handwriting to it.
Well, if I had forms to fill out and then send, right?
Right. But you could scan those in so that you saved a copy of them on your computer, right?
Well, you gotta scan it to fax it.
I suppose, and then to fax it to an email or something, I suppose you could do that too.
Exactly. And that way you have a copy of exactly what you sent.
But I, when I send it, I've also got a copy because after it goes through the printer, I've got.
But you're saying it in hard copy?
I've got the documents that were faxed and also the report that it was faxed and received.
True. Okay. Maybe we can take that discussion offline to figure out what he needs on a printer. And I'll check and see whether the printers would support being hooked up to a VoIP internet connection, which would mean we might have to go with one of the hardwired internet connections.
Okay.
Okay.
I have another question about the phones.
Before you go, I want to make a.
Yes, go ahead.
Comment to the people on the, on Zoom here. I saw that there was a couple of people had their hands raised. In order to conserve time, we're not really going to, uh, open the discussion up to the public in this workshop. Um, I'm sure that there are a lot of people out there that have knowledge and expertise to contribute to this exercise. Um, if you want to talk to people about that, um, just contact Linda Graves directly.
Send me an email.
After, I'm making a command decision here to contact Linda Graves. Her number's in the book, uh, and you can share your ideas with her, but we have to be out of here by.
Yeah, we've got to.
You know, probably no later than twelve o'clock.
Yeah.
The comment I wanted to make was if we have a business phone, our city phone number being forwarded to a private phone that may open your private phone conversations and logs to FOIA. So I think we need to stay with a business phone number.
I have a solution for that.
Okay, all right.
Uh, all of these Ring Centrels and all these that use an app, uh, they do call tracking and you can print reports from their system. So if we routed to FOIA who's made calls, what way, you know, calls incoming, calls outgoing from the business number, that can be done with the app.
Right, but the conversation I heard was to have the city number forwarded to my personal phone. We want to avoid that.
Yeah, no, it would be forwarded to your business number.
To your device, but the business phone number would be used.
And the call log would remain available.
Great, okay.
Personal phone means only hardware.
Well, no, if it, if a business number is forwarded to my personal phone number, it's a personal call.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I thought on this option three, it was forwarding it to a different number.
To the app, right.
You know, they can't, they can't FOIA a, a copy of the conversation they had.
Correct, right.
They can FOIA the call log showing it was forwarded to your number, and that's perfectly fine.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Okay, shall we move on to email?
Um, one last question on this. If, um, if we, if we go with option three and the call was forwarded to a city phone number on my personal device, um, how does that affect my data plan and things like that?
It affects it.
It might, yeah.
Because your phone is the device on the network, so it would affect your data plan.
Right.
Personally.
That's interesting.
I'd need unlimited data in order to.
Or a big data plan, yeah. I, I have a limited one, but I never, never see it, mine is a drop.
You know, the other option would be to buy cellphones, and you'd have to carry a separate one then.
Yeah, that's, that's what we want to, we wanted to avoid having to carry two cellphones.
Is your plan now unlimited, your personal plan?
No, no.
How limited is it?
Well, if we go on trips and Terry plays word with friends all the way from here to California, we run into trouble.
Oh, okay.
Um, we have, we have this, what do they call it, a senior plan or something like that with Verizon, has forty or forty-five dollars a month and it's unlimited data.
Yeah, we'll have to look into something like that.
Well, I'm unlimited with AT&amp;T.
You would only be using your data if you were not using your home Wi-Fi.
On the Wi-Fi, right.
So it'd be only those times when you were, uh, you know, away and.
Yeah, which.
It might be limited.
Under proposed, you know, for the first couple of years, I do not see this as being a problem. I don't think you're going to have that kind of volume.
And I, I don't think, I don't think there's that much data involved, frankly, more than any other app that you have in use.
You're not gonna, I mean, there'll be voice conversations, so that's very limited data.
Right. Okay.
Okay, you want to go to email?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to email. Okay, uh, we're looking for an email provider that preserves all of our emails permanently off-site, uh, so that there's no risk of disruption.
When you, when you say off-site, you mean?
And on their server, on a provider's server.
Right, okay.
That's, that's protected and backed up and all that kind of good stuff.
Right, and there's a lot of apps or software out there that does that. I've been researching with it.
Yeah, um, and a search mechanism is available for locating emails pertaining to various search criteria for FOIA purposes, that we have the ability for a local administrator to set up and cancel email addresses, that we can use various applications for local retrieval and storage on our personal devices. Um, we have training and instructional tools to use the email system, and we can use our own domain name like holidayisland.gov or cityofholidayisland.com or whatever we choose as the backend for our email addresses. So option one, and this is the only quote I've gotten, is use one-in-one Ionos, which is what Hi-Sid uses. They are a big provider of email systems like this. They have very capable archival and search criteria. They, as far as I can tell, they meet all those things that I had said. I talked with them yesterday, and the basic cost would be about, um, three hundred the first year and five sixty for every year thereafter for, um, I think the number of emails that we need, which is less than ten. So, uh, any questions on that one?
I don't, I don't, I don't understand where you go from three hundred to.
Well, they gave, they're, they're discounting your first year, basically, by that.
Oh, okay, so, but that's for the ten, ten addresses.
It's a, it's a, it's a come-on-get-you, you know?
Ten addresses.
It's ten, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, and what I did was I, I, I think I costed it out as seven or eight, something like that when I did that estimate.
Okay.
But it's, it's, it's pretty goo, a good deal for the first year, and then it gets more expensive if you stay with them, of course.
I, I did, tried to do some research on email servers and online, and, you know, they come up with several of them that, you know, is, is software applications that reside on your PC. I don't, uh, I could not really get into them. I don't, I could not really get into them deep enough to really figure out how they worked. I think somebody else figured it.
Ionus is perfectly compatible with Outlook and they'll give you instructions for how to set it up in Outlook on your devices. So you're not messing with going to their server every time you want to do something.
Yeah. These things were all free, but, you know, when things are free.
Yeah, you gotta watch out.
I was trying to get down to, but I think, you know, the other thing I would suggest here is we talk to some of the other local towns and see what they're.
Well, option two is looking at IT in a box because they also provide emails kind of like this, but I haven't been able to get them, so they haven't called me back.
Lawrence, your experience with this company?
Yeah, this is the company you use, Ionus, one-in-one.
I actually use both systems. I have it forwarded to Microsoft Outlook. But the great thing about this system is I can access it anywhere on my phone. So my own personal experience is I like it. So it's very simple and easy to use.
Well, I mean, we definitely have to have this, you know, and to, because we do not want to be using our personal email accounts.
And they said if we want to use their email system with our own domain name, they will acquire the domain name for us and we will pay them for the domain name. Actually, I think it's free maybe for the first year or something, but we would be paying them for yearly for our domain. And then we can use any, we can use any website builder to build on that for our website, too. He said we weren't restricted to just using them.
Oh. Okay. When you're talking about domain, you're talking about a website?
Mm-hmm. The URL.
Do we have to have that for this?
Yeah, if you want to back end an email address with it, you have to have acquired that domain name and own it.
Okay.
Lynn, when you checked, when you checked on that holidayisland.us.gov, did you get a price on it?
I did not go any further with it.
Okay.
But there's a government entity that manages the .gov addresses. So we have to have a resolution and signed and dated on city letterhead along with the application. So it's not a big deal. It's just we have to go through a different entity than an ISP provider.
Actually, that might be a good discussion to have right now. What does everyone think about using a .gov versus a .us or .com?
Just doing a little bit of snooping, I didn't see very many cities that use .gov.
I know, I didn't.
I would have thought they would have all used .gov.
Probably because they make it so hard to use .gov.
Either that or it's more expensive than other options.
And we set up prior to .gov coming out, I don't know.
.gov is fairly recent.
Those email addresses, was it email addresses?
Yeah.
That I put it, that I emailed people that I, as examples of what area places were doing. I think only one of them was, out of six or seven that I looked at, was actually .gov.
Yeah, they were all basically .com, weren't they?
.us.
Yeah. I kind, you know, I kind of liked the .us kind of to be consistent with Hi-Sid, but I'm easy, too, so I'll go with whatever, you know, majority wants.
I think that the basic question to ask right now when we can poll the people here is, do we, do we want to, are we ruling out sharing the www.holidayisland.us domain with Hi-Sid? If we're ruling that out, then we can kind of do anything we want.
Even if we went with that, we could still have a separate domain name for our emails.
Okay.
I mean, that wouldn't negate having a separate domain name for our emails, only.
Yes, we can own a domain without having a web presence. We can do that.
Yeah.
And that would probably be the best thing we could do, be the right thing to do, to own a domain name.
Yeah. If we're gonna, yeah, I think we should reserve one at least, right?
Yeah. Because you may, even if we do a sharing, you want to, at some point you're going to want to transition, probably. There may be.
You might, down the road, at least.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
I would think unless you can find something that would be at no cost, and there are some of them, but there's, it's going to be harder for us to implement since we don't have any employees.
Well, what we could do is you all bring your, your own suggested domain names to the next meeting and we can vote on them or something.
You're talking about domain names or email names?
Whatever you want to do, Dan.
What are the advantages of saying .us over .gov or whatever? What's the difference?
Well, the advantage with the .gov is that only Holiday Island, the city, can apply for it and own it because of the requirements of being a city official action. So that one can't be stolen.
Well, once you own it and pay for it, it can't be stolen either.
That's true. But no one can go in there and get it from us.
Right.
I guess, you know.
It'll always be there for us if you wanted it.
You know, the only thing I would know would be to talk to some of the other municipalities or the municipal league and see what, you know, if somebody has some firsthand knowledge of why they would use the US as opposed to the Geo.
Well, I think it's what Lawrence said. I mean, if us.us or .gov is a recent development, I mean, you know, we're the new kid on the block, so unless there's another new kid, everybody else established websites fifteen, twenty years ago.
A lot of times.
In doing, in doing, you know, internet searches, the advantage of .gov is, is that you're pretty much guaranteed that you're going to the government, the city government website.
Right. As you go in now, you get a whole lot of marketing.
One of the problems I have when I try to find, well, what's the city budget for Green Forest look like? So I Google Green Forest and you get, you know, seven or eight different Green Forest, you know, options and none of them are obviously the city.
Right.
And so you may have to go through two or three or four, you know, unless, you know, some of them, some people have put city of, you know, like city of Holiday Island in the domain, like cityofholidayisland.us. That makes it pretty obvious, too.
Well.
But if you just go, you know, holidayisland.com or something like that.
And holidayisland.com is already taken as a business.
And that's the problem. There's already, you know, three or four or five of them out there with Holiday Island in it that.
And there's a holidayisland AR that's a business, .com, sorry.
Yeah. And I think one of them is owned by some advertising outfit in Florida that, you know, they just buy up domain names.
I, you know, I experienced the same thing when I was trying to find meeting times and everything. I, you know, half the stuff I got was marketing, you know, like hotels and just dope things to see and I had a heck of a time actually getting to the official site.
A search on Google says that from the .gov domain name is four hundred dollars per year.
And what's a US?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
How much is a US?
In the others, in my experience, it's like fifteen dollars a year.
Yeah, probably not.
But depends on your provider, you know. If, if we use this Ring Central and they get it for us, we may change, they may charge us fifty dollars or something, you know.
Okay.
No, it's Ionus, the mail.
Ionus, okay.
Of course, yeah.
Well, I think that would be something else.
And they, they give, I think they give it to you free if it's not a .gov, the first year at least, and maybe fifteen thereafter, something reasonable.
I don't see any reason to use .gov because hardly anybody does. So I'd suggest we go with, if we don't use, if we don't share the domain name with the district, I would say cityofholidayisland.
That's my vote, too.
Something. That way it's obvious to people when they're doing a Google search that they're getting the city website.
Yeah.
And like we talked previously, you can have links on the Hi-Sid website to the city website. You can have links on the city website to the district website, so.
So can we put that on the agenda to affirm it or vote on it next time?
On the nineteenth?
Yeah. Is that okay, Dan?
Just so you know, because we've talked about it, anybody can go out there and take their registration for fifteen dollars.
If you have a complete proposal.
We don't need the whole thing. We could move forward with the emails maybe by the next meeting, is what I'm thinking. Because I think we need that quicker than anything.
Why don't you write the resolution?
Okay.
Because the council members are supposed to present the resolutions anyway.
Okay. Wow.
I would appreciate it if you would.
I'll try getting some experience with that.
A good resolution has at least two whereas's.
Is she going to propose?
I'm going to propose.
A domain name.
Domain name.
For the email.
For email.
Okay.
That could be our, a permanent one if we wanted it.
Would you check with that company and see the difference in the pricing in .gov and .us?
I think Lynn just told you it's four hundred for.
Well, I know, but you said you thought through them that it might be cheaper.
I'll check it out. I will, definitely.
I mean, it's, you know, just, I like the idea of making sure that we.
Yeah.
People can ask, really know where the heck they're going.
Good, good point. Okay, I think we can move on because we're running out of time.
Yeah.
Okay. On-site support services, I plan to check Megabyte. The other option, Megabyte is the provider for Hi-Sid. They're a company, they're a company, N. Rogers. I, you know, when I went online, I noticed they specialize in Apple products. That's what they're touting on their online website and I'm wondering, how does this compute? They're giving us PC support for Windows, so, but they were, they're competent.
Somebody called the mayor.
So I know they're very competent in what they do and the guy I spoke with was very nice. Also, I'm going to check what IT in a box, they have some services like that, too. See what they, you know, what kind of contract they have. And, or we could just go with a local IT guy, you know?
I, I think our requirements are going to be minimal for a long time. I think we don't need a, somebody that's, we're paying a monthly fee for for a while.
Well, I would like someone that we can consult with about especially like how to do our backup and recovery and storage and what have you. I think that's a particularly interesting situation that we need to be very careful about how we do it.
Well, that's a one-time.
It's a one-time deal, but it would take a few, you know, some consulting expertise and.
I bet we could sit down and figure it out.
Well, I know, but I don't want to. I don't want to risk losing all of our data because I made a stupid mistake. You know what I mean? I want someone who knows something about it.
I can attest to that with the rotary debacle, but.
Well, I just, I think when, when our knowledge is limited and we have access to people to knowledge is much greater than ours, when we're doing city business that's so important and we need to protect our resources and our data, it's worth hiring a professional.
On the municipal league recommendation, when have they promised an estimate on that?
I thought I'd have it by Monday.
Okay. I mean, that solves what we're talking about.
I talked to them last week and, you know, I was sure I would get a call by Monday, but no.
Our training starts at twelve thirty?
Yeah. But you're supposed to.
And I, you know.
Have to log in before that.
Yeah. So, you know.
Okay. I'm going to move on.
Just one comment.
Yeah.
I agree we need to, you know, if we, if we start working with somebody, it needs to be somebody that's fully capable. But we do have some, some people moving into Holiday Island with the intent to start up a business, you know, an IT support business. I think a lot of it is more geared towards website development and that kind of, you know, software kind of support and hardware support and stuff. But I, I think it would be good to at least check around to see, you know, who, if there's somebody qualified locally here in Holiday Island, I would like for us to use them.
Well, that's why I put it down as option three because I think there could be that person out there. And as long as they had experience with a fairly good-sized company doing this type of stuff, I think that would be okay.
We got, there was a lady and her daughter at the, at the chamber meeting. I got her contact information, so, and I think there's at least one or two others that are here in Holiday Island now, so, well, it's worth at least checking them out.
Yeah. So again, if anyone in the audience has any ideas and wants to run them by us, let us know. Okay. Going on to computers, another thing, we need two desktop or laptop computers for the mayor and recorder treasurer. I listed a whole bunch of configuration specs down that I think is a minimal configuration. I was talking yesterday to David Orr, who has a background in this sort of stuff and he, he thinks we absolutely need to go with, rather than an I-5, an I-7 for longevity, that it would be, it would last longer than an I-5 in terms of years.
I think the I-5s are what you're quoting for laptops, I-7s you can get with a desktop.
It might be, yeah, because desktops run a little cheaper processor.
Yeah, I think we need one of each.
Now, that's an option, too, that I think is worth doing.
I think, I would say.
We could go with an I-5 and an I-7.
The recorder.
He needs an I-7 and Dan could go with an I-5.
Well, a desktop.
But, yeah.
No, no, I want a desktop.
And I was going to ask for your personal preference. I think we can go with your personal preference.
The other, and some of the desktops you can get up to a terabyte disk drive.
Oh, all of them, all of them have terabyte.
You look at them, they'll start terabyte.
Yeah, they are.
I can go either way. The only reason, the only advantage to having one of the computers be a laptop is if we need to bring it in here at a Zoom meeting or something.
That's why I think you need a laptop for, you know, the, what do you call it? The PowerPoint presentations that we would use for meetings.
Well, why don't we make, you know, go with a laptop for Dan and a desktop for Wes and split, you get an I-5, you get an I-7, something like that.
You may be able to get it at night.
Because I don't think you're going to do gaming on it, are you?
I think you might be able to get an I-7 with the laptop.
David said he can put us in contact with a Dell representative that services Green Forest and she might be able to.
I don't know. I just ordered, I always just order mine online, you know, by phone.
I do, too, but.
And I.
He seemed to think that she could get us a better deal, so I'm going to talk to her and see if she can or not.
That'd be fine, but, you know.
Is Dell okay with everybody? What do you use at home with?
HP.
Okay.
Samsung.
I, you know.
I use a little bit of everything, so.
I think Dell is, I don't know, I've used them for twenty years and I, the only reason I ever get rid of them is because of software upgrades and now we, you know. They've gone to Windows 10 and.
Yours is an HP, isn't it?
This is an HP.
We can go with HPs if you want HPs. I think they're probably as good as Dell.
Get a price for the two.
And I don't go about HPs, but Dell has a government purchasing site online that's very easy to access.
Okay. Thank you. You can put me in contact with that. Okay.
I, I don't know.
Talking about PowerPoint presentations, I have a personal PowerPoint projector that I'd like to donate to you. So you don't have to worry about buying one.
Okay.
I have used it in three years, so I think it'll put us under these.
Okay. I'm sure we'll take it. That's good.
I, I don't know. I, I don't, the 2.5 gigahertz, that's for, what is that? I, uh, I don't know, I, I don't, is that 2.5 gigahertz or, that's for, what is that?
That's the processor speed.
Oh, okay.
Usually they, they, uh, the, uh, the lowest is 2.5, going up to 4.9 for max speed, so.
I mean, either one of those would be more than what we need, but, you know, you know, you're buying a computer nowadays, and it, you know, six to eight years, you're gonna, you're using it, so you, you need to be looking, you need to be, my experience is you buy the biggest thing you can buy.
Now, that's kind of the advice Dave's got too.
Huh?
That's, that's what David was telling us.
Anytime I, I bought them, I, you know, usually go for.
So we'll see if, if, what we can fit in the, maybe 2100 to 2500 range. Does that sound reasonable?
No, Hector, you can buy one for, I got a catalog at home I just got from Dell, and it, you know, a thousand.
Actually, this, this include, this is for two machines. These prices are for two machines.
Okay, I was gonna say.
And they include the monitors, the software, and everything, so.
Okay, I thought you were meaning each.
No, not per machine.
And I, and you can get a laptop for around eight, and the other one, maybe a thousand or twelve, something.
I think we could probably get pretty, two pretty good ones.
Government contract, you'd probably get it cheaper. Uh, what's gonna cost you now is that, uh, Microsoft Office, is your own brand, you.
Two forty-nine.
Okay. Is that one year?
Yeah, you might not just pay enough.
Pay for the license fee to renew it. The only other thing you're probably gonna need is, uh, Adobe.
Adobe, I agree with that, um.
Because there's so much stuff that you get incoming documents or.
Did I put that on there?
PDF documents and, no, I don't see it.
And some real good antivirus, anti.
Well, I don't know, I just, you can get one that comes with, uh, Microsoft, that I use, and it's been, been very adequate.
I left off the antivirus. I did make a note at home that we, I think we want Adobe.
Yeah.
Adobe Acrobat. Now, you have to buy that with a licensing fee now.
I don't know, so much.
So much a month?
So much is gone, so much a year. You, you don't wanna make monthly.
It's so much a year, but it is so helpful to send out documents that you don't have to have Word or PowerPoint on your device to open and to be able to combine pages and, uh, I have it on my PC.
I think you need Adobe anymore.
Adobe, so I'll put that down too. Okay. Does that sound good to everybody? You okay with that? Okay. Oh, did, do you want us to do HPs? If you two could chime in, do you want us to try to do HPs if we can?
Everything that I've got's HP.
HP works for me.
Okay.
And I agree.
We'll see if they have a, a government site that we can go to.
I don't, uh, let's wait and see what the prices are.
And I, I agree with Ken too. When I buy something, I normally get it as good as there is, because then it lasts a long time.
Yeah, it's very true.
Besides, whoop, I said something I better not.
Okay, are we ready to move on to printers? Printers? Printers is the next option here. Um, if we need to cut back on the money spent for printers, uh, I've, I've listed four different printers here that I priced out, that provide various kinds of functionality. So there's a color laser is printer, the first one. The second one is a monochrome laser, only prints black and white. They're cheaper, and they print faster. Printer three was a micro machine, microlaser, that uses micro toner, M-I-C-R toner, which is the magnetized ink that is used to print checks.
Oh.
On blank check stock, because it prints the bank numbers and the router numbers at the bottom, and.
Why do we need a check printer?
Well, we don't necessarily.
I mean, we ain't gonna write the.
But let me explain.
Okay.
That a micro printer to print, if you're printing checks rather than handwriting them out of a checkbook, if you're printing your checks, and our software will print checks, um, micro toner and a micro printer is the most secure fraud risk. Less, uh, it prevents fraud in the best way possible than any other way of printing checks. Now, I don't know that we're at risk for fraud a whole lot out here, but it's, it is something to consider. It does cost money to buy one of these laser printers that prints micro ink. So, and, uh, Wes had also tossed out that we could, we could print checks on a laser printer or desk check, for that matter too, just with, with pre-printed checks that have the bank numbers on them already. And I think the reason the micro toner is a little safer is because if you have pre-printed stock sitting around, it's, it, it can be stolen.
It has to have the magnetic qualities, doesn't it, for the banks to process it?
It has to be special pre-printed stock, but if, if someone stole your check stock, they could print checks themselves. Because they're not using any.
But that printer would be limited for, for that use, to, to just crank out checks?
Uh, if it has micro toner cartridge in it, you can switch out the cartridge and put a regular cartridge in it if you needed to in a pinch, but normally you, that, see, if you wanted to use it for something different, you'd have to switch the printer cartridge. Because that micro toner is very pricey, and you wouldn't wanna put, you wouldn't, it has a different, it has a different look to it when it's printed, and so that banks can easily recognize it.
If we're looking at total cost of ownership, pre-printed checks have a price as well.
Yeah, they do.
And you always gotta do a lineup check, and if it doesn't work, you gotta do another one. You gotta mess with your check register when you destroy one, so pre-printed checks have their, have their problems.
Yeah, I figure it's up to Wes to decide.
Well, and I have checked, for instance, we have stopped, we don't buy checks from the bank up here anymore, because their cost is ridiculous. I think for our church, we had bought 200 checks, and it was $240, about twenty a check. So I have started, you can go to Costco, and you can order checks there, they're printed by Harnold Checks, not Deluxe. They're printed by Harnold Checks, which is a, uh, you know, a check printing company too. And they're 500 voucher checks, which is a check at the top and two vouchers under it. 500 is forty dollars and eighty-eight cents or something like that. So we would need two sets of checks, one for street and one for general. So we'd have a thousand checks for eighty dollars.
That would only last us about six years.
Yeah, right. But the, the only option there that I looked was to order 500.
And we're gonna need to keep them in a safe.
And like here, you know, I think the proposal we got from the software people, and I know they wanna sell their, their printer and their stuff.
That's why overpriced.
And they're looking at what, $600 for a thousand check? So you're looking at sixty cents a check, and I'm looking at eight cents a check.
But they didn't even tell you the individual price of the check stock that they give us either, so you can buy that on Amazon too.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I priced out a different printer as, as number three, and got a price with $2.80 for the printer and toner. And you can buy a thousand checks, I think, for under a hundred.
I, you'd say.
The blank check stock.
I just don't see we need it at.
So it's, it's up for discussion whether we need that printer or not. That makes a difference in our printer configuration, so.
The one thing we don't wanna do is buy a, you know, five years' worth of check, blank, blank checks at, say, Town of Holiday Island, and then, you know, in April, change that to City of Holiday Island.
Well, that's true.
Something to consider. If we print everything from blank stock, then we can change it, uh, when we need to.
And, you know, and I don't know if we need to order checks right away. I don't see that we're gonna be writing that many.
I said we only need one check.
I, you know, guys keep.
Don't we have rolling expenses down?
We ain't got any money. I, you know, I, I think we need to go in, on printer, we need to go in low.
If you, if you wanna, we can also talk, well, maybe we should, I think deciding whether we need a micro printer or not is, is a key point in the discussion. Um, we might need to, I, I'm just gonna, I think we should leave that up to Wes and Dan to decide personally, so.
Which means we're leaving it up to Wes to decide.
Well, I would think we could get by without that for a while.
I think we'd have to buy without it for a long time.
Yeah.
But, uh, and, yeah, you may find you don't need it, but it's not a necessity.
Pardon?
It's not a necessity.
Right.
I mean, it is a, it's an option. And if you don't think you're at risk for fraud, I don't think it's, I think you can get by cheaper without it.
My only requirements are that it do, uh, two-sided copying, um, black and white and color, and, um, scan. That's really the only thing I ever use, and I don't see it being much different for me personally.
That number one would fit that bill, would it?
Yeah, it's a color and black and white. The only problem is it's, it's, it's slower than a monochrome on its output. And so you're, you're waiting for, if you're doing large documents, you're waiting to turn them out or multiple copies.
See why we would.
But it has all the functions.
And then, you know, Wes, whatever requirements Wes has for check printing.
I would think we'd wanna be able to do legal.
Yeah, well, all of these are.
Legal size.
Legal and letter.
And duplex, print on both sides.
Yeah, they're all duplex.
Will they scan legal? That's the issue.
I believe so. I believe so.
All right. We've got a, an office jet at home, and it does all of those, and you said it, you know, if you're scanning letter or legal size.
Because you have a big enough glass. I mean, the lid, the plate has to be big enough to hold the legal.
Right, right.
All right.
That's a good price on that too. About $4.50?
$4.50 for 22 per minute, and the only difference in the 600 is it does 28 per minute. Black and white, that's not the color, by the way, but that's the black and white speed. Any other questions?
I don't see.
They, uh, the multi-function, does print, copy, scan, and fax.
What is it?
But I have to see if it works hooked up to a VoIP line.
I know the four says, uh, letter size only.
Well.
So we're, we're looking at.
Or the higher, higher cost when, the high end of the cost is a, um.
Well, I think, you're talking about printer one, right?
Yeah, if you've mentioned, it's the inkjet. If you wanted to go with the monochrome and the inkjet.
No, we don't want them.
You just, you'll throw that away in a couple of years.
Possibly, because it's cheap, yeah.
Yeah.
Mine, my, my desk jets don't last me hardly more than two years, and I give them a workout.
Which one are we talking about?
Well, either one you wanna talk about.
One or two?
Well, those are the laser jets. One's monochrome and one's color.
And.
So printer one, I think, is the preferred option so far.
You can get by with, with that and not have anything.
For a long time.
Now, that, the problem is you don't have a backup if it goes crazy on you, so.
No, that one, is that a laser or?
It's a laser. Number one is a laser. Color and black and white both.
Well, and I would say, you know, we have an office jet at home, and I think it was rated like a 180 copies per month or something like that, which is, and I don't.
This is rated a little higher than that.
I use maybe a little over a case of paper a year, and we've, I've used that one for, I don't know, three, four years already with no problem.
I think I looked at the rating on, on these, the number one, uh, both the 450 and 600, they, I think they had all the capability and copies per month that you would need.
No, when it says, it says Apple AirPrint capable, I guess I don't.
That means if you have an iPhone and you wanna print something on your iPhone, off your iPhone, you can just.
What about Android?
Probably the same thing. I think you may have to use their app to do that with Android, because they have an app to put on your personal device for printing. Which might be important if you went with Ring Central or one of those that you use the app and got something from somebody that you wanted to print.
I think, I think number one would probably be.
It's the most versatile, and it would do all, you know.
Given the volume we're gonna be doing, you know, that thing should last six, eight years.
I would think so.
Yep.
Sounds like we wanna go with number one and then see if we need something else later.
Yeah, check and see if that's available on that contract.
Contract? Oh, that was a Dell contract. I can check and see if HP has a government plan though.
All right. Okay, we need to get going there.
Okay, uh, maybe we can whiz through the rest of it quickly. What's next here? Okay, accounting software, I think that's a no-brainer. We, we wanna go with CSA software, one seat for Wes.
My only, I, I need to know what the support is at. That's a lot of money.
You get.
And you're gonna be, you know, for the first year, we're gonna do, be doing.
That's a point. I mean, it is a point. If you wanted to, to the second year, you have to get by with the spreadsheets first.
I, I instituted an accounting system and, and stuff for the ambulance district, and I run it on, and I've run it for eight, six, eight years now, just using Quicken, and it's, and I have it audited, or had it audited every year by, um, what's her name? Kristy Ball. Just using, you, you can set Quicken up, and you can, it budgets, and, and you can have as many, you know, you can have a different company for each one of the accounts, you know, the street, general, until you get down the line, you know, to actually be doing, you know, that's a lot of money.
There's also state statutes that require we have certain functionality, and certain reports have to be filed electronically, so the software that we buy has to support all those requirements.
We're talking to them, but this software is all approved by the legislature bought it.
I, I wanna see the requirements.
Don't you think it should be Wes's decision?
Huh?
I said, don't you think it should be Wes's decision, though? Well, he's the one that has to live with it.
I know, and, and I'm, and at some point in time.
And we don't wanna use too much of his time either. He's doing this part.
I don't wanna have to be setting up a separate accounting system and worry about it meeting the state requirements.
That's a lot of damn money.
It, it is a lot of money, but.
And you're not gonna be doing anything for a year.
Except filing every report.
Is that?
All, all the reports have to be filed, even if they have zeros in them, so.
Right.
What is, what is the one-year?
They, they will come and install it for you. They will train you on it, and then you can, uh, uh, call and have online help, uh, unlimited during the year.
Yeah, I.
And they're very responsive to Hi-Sid. I know Hi-Sid has had no problems, so.
Our, our cash flow is going to demand that this not be done in the first six months, so we can, we can put this in the plan, but it, it, it won't be.
I have no problem with it in the plan, you know, when we actually get up and, you know, really going, but, you know, I, it, it's overkill to start with, anyway.
I think if you buy it mid-year, Wes may have to backfill the other, the transactions into it probably when you first get started.
You know, I've got to issue monthly reports to you, and then I think the requirement is we have to file an annual report with the state, and then it has to be audited.
Well, I'm doing, you know, never mind. I'm just saying, you can get there a whole lot cheaper for the first couple of years, but.
Well, we were gonna, we're gonna, no matter what time of year we buy this, we have to outweigh the whole amount initially.
Right.
It's not a monthly deal.
And I'd say, once we start getting money coming in, I think we'll be doing everything from that point on that we'll be doing pretty much into the future.
You're still going to have less than 12 transactions a month, probably. So, I would like to see the accounting requirements.
I just lost my internet connection.
Uh-oh. Did we lose the meeting?
Yeah.
How about you, Wes or Lynn?
I can't tell if it's any activity or not.
Well, I, you know, and looking at the samples that they sent to us, I like the reports and stuff that, that the software puts out and the way it looks, and like I say, I don't want to have to be setting up a.
We're back now.
New accounting system.
We got, we got our host disabled part.
Hold on, I'll find you.
We have an internet signal here.
I'm no longer hosting the meeting.
Okay, you are now.
Okay.
Okay. Have we talked about this and that?
Yeah.
We're going to move on to the website. Oh, boy, that's going to be a long discussion, though. And we'd already talked about data storage. I think we can buy enough data storage onsite for 200 and maybe not even that much.
The only comment I make about data storage, because of the issues that we've talked about with security, that if a device, a PC, a laptop gets infected and is hooked to the network, it goes right to your data storage unit as well. So we just have to handle that data storage unit gracefully, like not have it on until we're ready to use it and then disconnect it.
Well, actually, I think we might even use one that's just, you just plug in USB to your PC.
Okay.
And rather than LAN connected, I agree, but that is a risk.
That would, that would be my suggestion, it'd be a separate unit.
Okay. So maybe that's the way to do it.
The other thing is you, you need to, your backups need to be stored someplace different where the computers are.
Yeah. I'm thinking we can use a combination of USB or, or connected drives to do backups, and then also backup to a cloud server, so that we have it fully secured. We need to talk to a consultant about that.
Yeah, writing the scripts to do those backups is.
Well, they have software to do it, though.
Yeah.
And the reason I made that comment is because your last note says Ethernet connected, and I prefer that we don't do that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to rethink that, too.
Okay.
I think you're right.
Yeah, I would suggest, like on ours, I've got a external hard drive that's plugged in all the time, but I have to tell it when it's supposed to back up.
Right.
And then I have an old, I had replaced a hard drive, and I do a full copy of everything on the hard drive like once a month or whatever, and I would have a spot, a secure spot that's about as good as a bank safety deposit box under our front porch, it's all in fixed to a back grid wall.
True is.
Not subject to flood.
You know, I could take an external drive and.
Mayonnaise jar, but the fucking waggon's in it.
But we can work out the backup and the storage and all that details, but anyway.
Okay, we'll go back and talk about website for a bit, then. I think a website is essential. I did talk to the gal that developed the Hi-Sid website. We had a good discussion, and she sent me a proposal with two options, one to have a standalone website, and the other one to tack into the Hi-Sid website and then do a split of the information in some easily understandable fashion to explain, this is city government, this is Hi-Sid's functions, and, and then here's all the information about the city, and here's all the information about Hi-Sid. And then there's, you know, data that they kind of share, like the community data that's out there and the, you know, stuff about our community that's out there would be shared between us. And that has a lot of pros with it because it, and she explains it better in her proposal, which I can send to y'all, but we already have the benefit of seven-plus years of using Hi-Sid's website. And because of that, the Hi-Sid website gets priority with search engine optimization, and so when anyone does a search looking for Holiday Island, it's one of the first websites that you see on the Google search page, because it's been around for so long. If we build our own website using our own domain name, it's going to be way down in the searches, because it's new. No one's seen it before, no one's used it before, it doesn't have, it doesn't have the traffic history. So that's one reason to, if not immediately, eventually join with Hi-Sid in an effort to update one website for all of us. And now, that's my personal preference in how we do our website eventually. Initially, I think we could really benefit by having a web presence using perhaps the domain name that we use for our emails. And, you know, if we change later to tack into Hi-Sid, you could always point that domain name to the Hi-Sid website, so that that would be the one that came up if they happened to use that URL. So, but we could create our own website initially for almost free. We could do it for free, except that we can't have a domain name that we want, but the very, I tried two different website builders. One was Weebly, W-E-E-B-L-Y, Weebly, and the other one was Wix, W-I-X. Those are two popular website builders. I went out there and built a prototype for us, and each one showing a, just a general structure, very simplified structure, and I gave you links to the prototypes in this document, so.
Okay.
If you want to go check them out and look at them, you can. I talked to David Orr last night. He built the Green Forest Cities website in Wix, actually.
Well, I looked at the, when I was trying to find some information, and I went into Eureka, Berryville, Green Forest, and Green Forest was the best website I saw of the three.
Actually, Lynn and I liked the looks of the Wix version over the Weebly version quite a bit. It is a much slicker look.
I don't know which was which, but I'm just saying.
And it was easier to use.
The Green Forest one was a lot easier to actually find stuff.
Yes, very straightforward, I know.
The worst is Eureka Springs.
Yeah. I, I gave up.
It's impossible to find anything on that website.
I think that's on purpose.
I was impressed by the Huntsville one.
I haven't seen Huntsville.
A lot has to do with the designer and how they've designed it.
The Huntsville one is very user-friendly, easy to find what you're looking for.
You might call.
I think I will, I'll call him.
Yeah, because it, Dan sent out an email.
Okay, I, yeah.
See what they use. Now, some of these cities and towns use I O in a Box to build their website.
Again, this is an item that we don't have to decide on, you know, for another three or four months.
But actually, I, you know, if, if we could decide on this at the next meeting and get our domain name, we could whip out a quick and simple website that we could use to post our documents on immediately.
That's, that's very important to get out there, because, you know, if there's an issue or something we do, we need to be out there where we can set the narrative of having our documents out there and not let.
It would be handy, you know, with resolutions there.
We've already passed nine resolutions, and nobody has any access to them unless they call me or Wes, and we'll run them a copy or email them a copy, so.
So my, my suggestion is we pass a resolution to do that at the next meeting, so that we could get started with it and create a cheap website that doesn't cost us much.
You already know what I'm going to say.
That's too resolution.
I got it. I'll have it ready.
You're going to leave here with a lung to do this.
Okay. How soon is that meeting?
Nineteen.
For God's sake. Okay. Okay. So, but anyway, yeah, I think we can do it real easily that way, and then maybe look at tying into the Hi-Sid website using next year's budget or something, and maybe we could split costs some way or another with the Hi-Sid for the, it'll cost about $5,000, $5,700, I think, was the cost to modify the Hi-Sid website to include us, if y'all want to do that.
The, the point that I have with that is you talk about the history of Hi-Sid for seven years, and it carries, are you going to change the name of their site? Because if you go to the City of Holiday Island and whatever link, it's going to say Hi-Sid on it. It's not going to come up with our name on the website.
Yeah, I think it should, because it's holidayisland.us, it could pertain to both of us in terms of its URL.
It could, but when you do a search, it says Suburban Improvement District.
That can be changed.
That's the title they changed, right. That's what I'm saying, it would change their title.
But I think it's the URL that affects the search engine, but I'll clarify that. But she, she told me, Allison did, if she changed the website, that it would come up, but I think you've got a good point there to look into.
Okay. That's the first thing that, in the, in the structure of the FML or the, whatever the language is, it tells you what is the name that's displayed. It's a feature, it's called the title.
So I'll see if that affects the search engine or whether it's the URL.
Using, both the city and the district using the same URL for the website, and then having a, you know, a homepage on that website that, that had decision trees so that people could, could go to the right location after that. Now, that was the only reason why I wanted to share the URL with the district. If that can be done, you know, like, let's say that the district has their own, cityofholidayisland.us, and it's way down the list on the Google search, won't hurt us as long as the first, the homepage on the Hi-Sid website, the .us one, gives them that, that direction.
Yeah.
Let's say they go to that one first, as long as that homepage says, if you're looking for these kinds of, you know, if your interest is over here, then click on this.
And a lot, a lot of the cost that she quoted for the $5,700 was to rewrite their website, the underlying, change out the software base that from CMS, CMS, or to WordPress, because whatever the underlying software she used to build that seven, eight years ago, they aren't keeping up to date with the current software, with the releases of security and things like that in their software, and putting out new releases of the software when security things change or when there are improvements or fixes needed. And she's worried that in the long run, you really need to change the underlying platform of that, and she could both do that and tie us in with the seven, with the $5,700. She's got to rewrite it in WordPress, which, which apparently has taken, it wasn't as popular back when she built the website, but it is now the most popular tool out there that people are using, and she feels they are really up to date with their security. So.
But if they do, if she could do what Dan just proposed of putting a box on the front of the Hi-Sid that says, you know, you need the Town of Holiday Island, you know, click here to.
But she would charge us $2,700 to build our own website with WordPress.
Okay, but, you know, it'd probably be minimal for them to do that on the Hi-Sid page, and that's going to be half the cost if we share their.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is we wouldn't need our own page if we got embedded in one Holiday Island.
Well, we're going to need it for the email to start with.
Or we need the domain.
Yeah, so, you know, we can, and you said we can put that in there and we can post our documents there for a while, so I think that's what we ought to do.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
This doesn't work in our, your.
Yeah, please, we can do that.
Okay, so first I want to share with you my favorite four-word phrase going forward, "Talk to the mayor." So, but, you know me, I, I don't like being non-committal, but in this particular case, I have to be a little bit non-committal in the, in the details of everything that, that falls out, especially with the website. You know, I think we all agree that we do have to maintain some kind, well, we have to maintain an independent structure, so we're easily identifiable as two separate entities and not create any kind of confusion. But the part that I will commit to is I know that as we grow together in this cooperative relationship, the financial benefits to the district and the, the city are profound. And there's so many unknowns right now that if we just move forward with an eye on looking for every economy of scale, every way to reduce administrative costs for both entities, I think those things are, are the things that we have to look at. But right now, to be able to sit you guys on a course saying, we'll go which way or another way with the website.
Well, and you have to answer to the board.
Exactly. That's the best way to put it, I answer to the board, but the board is committed to the cooperative relationship. You have my personal commitment to a cooperative relationship, and I understand that every dollar that we save on administrative costs, like Mayor Key said, is one more dollar that we can put towards paving roads. And I, I think that's where we need to keep the eye on the ball.
And we don't need to make the decision on the, the joint website immediately, either.
Exactly, exactly. We can, because there's so many different ways to do this that I just didn't want to leave you without a commitment, but unfortunately, right now, I can't give that commitment.
Yeah.
So, that's all I want to say.
Okay.
Okay.
So, are we ready to wrap up, then?
I think so.
Move to Jerry.
Okay, so we can adjourn the workshop. We'll be looking for a couple of resolutions at the next meeting of the town council. I'm going to stop sharing.
I'll second Jerry's motion to adjourn.
Do we have to adjourn a workshop, or do I just?
We called it to order.
All right. Well, I just, yeah, I guess. Okay. All in favor of adjourned the workshop?
Aye.
All right, adjourn.
Unfortunately, I did some more research.